Other questions?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Well, I think we're all in support of this. I just want to make sure, is there consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
I did just think of one more thing, though. We had discussed some issues around what that does to the ability to get out of that section. And you brought up some other things that were in the works.
Was that the next light?
Now, it was about the only Bateman piece, that dog leg there and straightening that.
Oh, and the discussion about straightening.
Yeah, because I do still have some concerns about how do you get out of there and get southbound without going all the way to Fruitland if that's not maintained, let's say, in the snow, when it's not cloud or anywhere, or it's eventually closed off.
Well, you can still, you can still get, the way that I go all the time is, I go to Pat's for pizza. I go past where the county recycling is, just go down that street, make a left and a right, and you're back at Pat's.
Avery Street.
Avery Street.
Avery Street, back at Pat's.
Pat's Pizza, you come out of Pat's Pizza.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about, like, say, you're at one of the offices on Power Street, like, my doctor's office is there. So, if I come out, usually I go to Wayne and go right to Bateman and come out at the light so that I can head southbound, because I'm usually heading to the pharmacy afterwards. Not usually, but a lot of times. But if I have to go south, so now, getting out on...
Go to Milford and make U.
Yeah, but that's the thing, is you can't get straight across, so you've got to go down and around. We had a lot of discussion about this when we were talking about the only Bateman, and there were a lot of older people in that neighborhood, that area. I'm just using that as one example, but we heard that a lot. How will I get southbound? How would I get, you know, can we do a light at Milford Street? Can we do, you know, there were a lot of questions around that, and I think you were here for some portion of that near the end. And that's what I'm trying to address, is from that perspective, how do they get southbound? On thirteen, in a reasonable manner.
A honeysuckle on a crest.
A honeysuckle.
And make a go, and make, at the light, make a left.
At the light.
I'm just getting back out onto either Division or Milford, still ends up taking you either to Fruitland or you're doing around.
The honeysuckle's not even simple.
It's all the street.
Yeah. It's by the pizza place and railroad tracks.
By Domino's.
By Domino's.
Oh, okay, the back.
Canal Park.
Okay, I know where you're coming from.
Canal.
Canal Park Drive.
Canal Park Drive.
Canal Park. Yeah, that would be the next, the next light down. I mean, I guess I'm not seeing a place that you could be, that you could get to, that you'd have trouble finding an alternative route. I'm not seeing.
Just a lot of, I mean, you could, obviously, you can do it. You can go out at Milford and go and do the U-turn and all that. It's a lot of, older people don't like to have to do that U-turn thing, get across all three lanes of traffic or four at that spot, and then do the U-turn as well, so. That's why I was asking about that. Do we have any other information about changes on Bateman only, or that's somewhere down the line?
At this point in time, we'll have to have the discussion about only drive and how we finally develop that. And I think that's just preliminary discussions with the university, trying to see what the plans are overall with how South Division Street is going to be integrated in and making that connection between Bateman and only. There's been previous discussion with councils about how that winds up. Still, as we get the master plan sort of deeply anticipated from the university, we'll be taking a look at that and then coming back to you with some proposals on that. And I think the city is also looking at how that potential development there, the intersection there with South Division or only, with their property, that the city owns that one piece of property, and how all of that works out.
Well, the city owns that corner.
Yeah, that corner where it's rumored to be changed off.
So, that discussion report coming in, we can look at those kinds of ways and how that's going to be controlled.
The only concern I would have is that, and I think I wouldn't want to use it anyway, is when the stadium is built, football, soccer, I'd be trying to avoid going around Bateman or even Avery. I'd be making the, if I lived on only, I'd be making the left to go down.
Yeah, avoid that.
I wouldn't be going around the college, you know. I automatically say I'm going left now, you know. Yeah, because there'd be a lot of activity around what's is developed.
And I think that's what we kind of anticipate is, this project goes ahead, it's going to bring a lot more people down to the university, a lot, maybe events that now could be coordinated and flow between these different fields and work members of campus.
Right.
As opposed to being dissected.
So, we don't have to take any action to, to away with the parking there if we're abandoning the street, correct?
Correct.
The only issue is the parking, that'd be the next piece of the agenda, the piece that we're going to change.
Okay.
Do we anticipate this roadway being closed off during events?
Potentially, that would be something that could happen, because I kind of see the Wayne Street during that period with the outflow of people coming out from the stadiums and the events, the people be, you know, it's sort of like there's plenty of victories, milling around.
Yeah.
So that, it becomes more of a, the way I look at it, just from being at other events, people just go out and enjoy the aura of winning and...
Right, I think the pedestrian safety issue here is really a big, a big one, so it's a, yeah.
We anticipate lots of victories.
Yes.
Lots of victories.
Just contain them victory parties right there and then.
Great. Okay, so there is consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yeah.
Yes.
The timeline, I assume, being tight, is this something that we can move to the 12th?
We could do the 12th and the 26th.
12th and the 26th.
Be done with it.
This has already been proposed.
You okay with that? All right, so we'll have it done by the 26th officially. Next item is the parking modifications.
Okay, so these modifications are outside of the area that we were just discussing with the abandonment. And there's a couple of different modifications, and your package has an existing and a proposed plan. So, on Wayne Street, between Power Street and Milford Street, the proposal is to remove nine vehicle spaces to create two bus spaces. And the bus spaces will be recessed in, so they're not going to follow the existing curb line, they'll be recessed in from the existing street to give more width there for the buses. The other change is on Power Street. There's currently a sort of a maintenance yard there where there's an opening and there's no parking for two spaces. What they'd like to do is close off two other spaces that will become the driveway to a side parking lot and add two spaces where there is the existing entrance to that maintenance yard. So, it's just a swap of removing and adding two parking spaces on Power Street.
Is that expanding the size of the maintenance yard?
I think it's actually providing an additional parking lot over there.
Parking storage room.
Yeah, storage lot.
Okay, proposed car parking.
There was discussion at the last time about the site distances, especially as it relates to the buses. And so, DBNF, who is here tonight to speak to this, also showed the site distances on the drawings. So, at existing conditions, if you're parked on Power, or if you're sitting at Power Street trying to turn out onto Wayne Street, you have approximately a seventy-six foot site distance if there's a car parked in the last allowable space. Under the new change, based on the way the bus will be recessed back in, you would have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five foot site distance. So, there is an improvement with what they're proposing.
That's, the two notes that I had on here was that it looked like now this was recessed.
Yes.
And so, that's good. But the, the alternative that I discussed when Robbie and I did a ride around was putting the bus parking on the other side of the street.
Oh, towards...
On the west side, because there's no street coming in, there's no entry point from there that that would block.
On the west side of Power or the west side of Wayne?
The west side of Power, the same spot, just on the other side of the street.
Of Wayne Street.
Of Wayne, yeah. I'm sorry, what did I say?
The south, the south side of Wayne.
Yeah, so, and the other thing that that did was give them multiple points of entry, directions that they could come into that spot. So, that was something that we... Because this direction, they can only come in from Milford Street and park there. The other, if they were on the other side of the street, they'd be able to come from Bateman down Wayne and park there, they'd be able to come in from Power and park there.
Yeah, I guess I didn't see that as a limitation in terms of where they could park. Now, this is, the bus that goes here, as I understand, is visitor.
The visitor bus.
Visiting teams.
Yeah.
So, if Wayne is closed off for the victory party, the visiting bus wants to get out of there as quickly as possible. They're still going to be able to go down Power, but I don't know how that, I guess that's wide enough for the buses to turn, to do it now, I'm sure. I just thought that was an easier solution, was putting them on the other side. Might, I don't know what it costs to recess that sidewalk to do that, and, you know, what issues we'll still have with line of sight, but certainly that, if those parking spots went away and the buses were on the other side of the street, it's even better, in my opinion, just something to think about.
Yeah, the bias to the logic with the bus parking was that they would be on the same side of the street, getting off to go into the stadium, rather than have to cross Wayne Street.
But where they're parked now, they're on the same side of the street, but it's the police station and the other office buildings there, so they still have to cross Power Street.
Yes, we just would have to cross both.
We, we...
Well, on our side, they wouldn't even...
Jeff Downs for Salisbury University. We did take that idea, or back to the athletic director. There are kind of pros and cons there for each of those alternatives, but what, our biggest limiting factor is there's not very much room on the east side of that soccer field. Whereas if we took that street curb and pushed it westward into the soccer field, now all of a sudden, we've pinched bleacher and spectator spaces. Also, there is a telecommunications manhole there that would be quite expensive to move.
Oh, I wouldn't, I wasn't thinking to recess the sidewalk on that side. Because there's no line of sight issue, there's no street coming out onto there like Power Street, so there's no, you're not blocking anything, just park them on the street where the existing cars parked now, parking spaces are now.
So, you're saying just park on the street?
Yeah, but they would park right on Power Street, I mean, on Wayne Street, I'm sorry, on the opposite side from where you show them here.
So, we would see it as a difference having the bus be able to be recessed, that was parked on, as shown, and back off of the street.
I think also there was hesitancy about parking buses directly in front of the stadium, and also getting them farther south, particularly the soccer team entrances are much farther south at the new athletic team building. So, the closer we could get them to that entrance to athletic, the soccer field entry was desirable as well.
Well, I'm comfortable with the recessed sidewalk, much more than I was with just eliminating a few parking spaces and spaces and moving the bus back, because we rode out there and I was like, you can't see anything with cars there. I know with buses, you're not going to be able to see, so I'm comfortable with that. That seems like a reasonable solution, I was just thinking that might be a little easier, a little less expensive, but there's pros and cons to everything.
I appreciate that. I, I think if it's okay, we like the recess as it's shown on that east side of Wayne Street, close to the soccer field entry point.
Sure. Okay, Ms. Sheehan?
I have one question. Traffic control, the university police would be trafficking with that, controlling the traffic when you have games and soccer and all that, because, you know, some people are not going to park right.
Yes, that's almost daily.
Yeah, so, because, because I know this is one, going to be one of the questions from the only residents about the parking, you know, how they're going to park in the crowd and all that.
There's a pretty heavy presence of university police on game day.
Okay, good.
Game day. And recently, I guess to answer Mr. Spees' question, we did close Wayne Street, have done several times in the past, like Homecoming, I think, was the most recent. And we got, we got nothing but praise for that, just everything was in a much more controlled, it was particularly much safer for pedestrians. So, on occasions when we have a big game and we might expect two thousand or twenty-five hundred spectators, so whether that's three or four times a year or five times a year, I'm not sure, but it's not, certainly not every game, but it might be Homecoming plus the three top games of the year, we would close Wayne Street, just really worked out well recently. But university police, they're there the day before, setting up barricades, coning things off, contacting vehicles that are in the way. That's a very heavy presence.
Yeah, I, I attend a lot of the events that are over there. And one of the issues in terms of safety is, when there's a game going on at the stadium, there may be three other games going on at the soccer field, the baseball field, and the softball field. And that is a very dangerous, if you just go down there and watch, the car's empty. And this way, it'll be controlled and the, the campus police will have a much easier time, in my opinion, in order to protect the people who are involved.
In case we have the ordinance.
I do appreciate the time that you guys took to, to address that and that Mr. Sheehan took to do that ride along with me and, and address, look at those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do. The one question I had, and I think I did answer this, but just to be clear about it, the, you know, the site that we're talking about, the portion of Wayne that we're talking about now, is outside of the future abandoned portion of Wayne. So, there, the cost of those improvements, will they be borne by the university?
Yes, it will be borne by the university.
Yes, as part of their project.
Okay. All right, that was the only other cost.
And they'll be done according to city's Department of Public Works standards.
Standards, okay, great, thank you. Thanks. Okay, I assume that the urgency of the first resolution or the first ordinance is not quite the urgency of this ordinance. But if we need to move them both simultaneously, we can.
If there are no changes, I would recommend we just put them on the same time.
Fine with that, all right. Okay, okay, we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Downs. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is over occupancy of rental property ordinances. Ms. Phillips. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I have a revised policy outline and a few corrections to the ordinance, I believe, few with any to the ordinance and to the policy outline.
Excuse me, could you move the mic a little closer? I'm sorry.
She left.
Sorry, yeah, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few corrections, changes to the policy outline, as you will see here, it's allowing neighborhood services to issue a citation at the time of identification of an overoccupied property. That was not in the original policy outline, as you will see there, number one. And then, at the very end of the memo, it's just reiterating fifteen twenty-four two eighty, removing two unrelated fifteen twenty-four sixteen forty and fifteen two six, renewal, denial, and suspension of license and or registration. I think it's very important that we are able to issue a citation at the time of identifying an overoccupied property. Since, since this change in legislation has come to council, we've identified four more overoccupied properties just in the same area, the map that we brought to you in the Druid Hill area.
All within that area.
All within that area, so now we're up to forty-eight. So, there's definitely a need, and that's just this year since September.
Are you at liberty, Susan, to tell us, you know, how those are being identified? I know we had a conversation about, you know, how we were made aware, how we're able to discover. Are you at liberty to kind of get generally, kind of give us a sense of, has it also been through police calls, parties, or, you know, has it been a difference?
Almost all are complaint.
Complaint driven.
Complaint driven. Some are police calls, I attend comstat meetings, so I am getting police reports, that kind of stuff, I do get information from that, some are very, very, very few, most of them are complaint driven. This has been the worst year yet. We have never had forty-eight in one year, they've all been about a dozen.
Right.
So, that is why I'm here really begging for something to change. Neighborhood services cannot handle that many in one year of over occupancy as compared to having, twelve was a burden, let alone forty-eight. Because this type of violation is such a burden in itself, because it's not like going out and identifying rubbish. It's not just going out and seeing rubbish and writing it up and being done.
Requires an investigation.
It's, it's, it is like an investigator going out and...
Surveillance.
It takes hours and hours of surveillance and determining. So, forty-eight is, is a really big depletion of city services from, from our department. So, it's very important we do something. I think it's very important that we have the ability to write a fine when we identify an overoccupied property at the same time. It's no different to me, and this is really not a good comparison, but when someone is speeding, when they're pulled over, they get a ticket. If they want to argue that the fact they weren't speeding, they have the ability to go to court with that ticket, same difference here, or same, same situation here. They can take that fine to district court and they can argue their case to the judge and let the judge decide, same situation.
So, you're saying, oh, I'm sorry, you're saying that you're going to find, first, you give them a citation, it's going to be the find.
Yes.
And then do your investigation and give them ten days to clean it up.
We would, we would not issue a citation unless we were sure that it was overoccupied.
But our discussion was about whether or not the property owner knows about that and having an opportunity to remedy that, which, as I understand it, is what has changed in your procedure that's driven that number from twelve to forty-eight. It's not a, not a sudden explosion of overcrowding, but a difference in the way that you're counting them.
Our, our procedure has not changed over the years, nothing has changed the way we've been doing things.
But you gave them a chance to, to...
We've, we've never given them a chance to clean it up, per se, never given them a chance.
It's just got more of that, that's not what I understood from our first conversation about it. Okay, it's, I'm sorry, it was my misunderstanding, then. But a couple of things about this, you give a citation when you've identified it, and that's by your means, whatever they may be, a variety of ways. At the same time, you're launching an investigation. If you're writing a citation that says to me, if I'm the property owner, you've already determined, so what are you investigating? And then, if within that ten days, then you're giving them ten days to correct the problem before taking further action, but if in that ten days, if the property owner knew nothing about it and they take the legal steps and they put that person at the, whoever's causing the overoccupancy, one person, three people, whatever it is, out, then we've gotten what we were after, and what happens to that citation then?
Either paid or go to court.
Well, if I could weigh in here, too, it's, it's important to keep in mind that what we were trying to accomplish here was tying two pieces of legislation together. When we realized that we had an unusual amount of overoccupied properties this year, we took a look at the code to see what, if anything, it would allow us to do in the way of having a way to deal with this issue. So, the, the first piece that we're trying to, the first thing we're trying to accomplish here is to tie in the ability to suspend a license if and when somebody violates the occupancy provisions. They're in separate places in the code, fifteen twenty-four, sixteen forty, I believe it is, I could pull out the paper out, that, that's where your occupancy provisions are. Fifteen twenty-six is rental or residential premises. So, the first thing we wanted to do was tie those two things together. If you're violating the occupancy provisions, then we want to have the ability, the ability to suspend your license. So, that's the first thing that we were trying to accomplish. And then additionally, we wanted to talk about getting those properties reduced down to the appropriate number of occupants for the district. I think at one point, we were saying everything would be reduced to two. Mr. Tillman pointed out that that's not always necessarily the case, it may be three and in some cases, maybe four, given the example that there might be five people living there. That somehow, along the way, we got off on the conversation of talking about the, we went from working on a piece of legislation to writing policy directive. Fifteen twenty-four has always allowed us to write a citation if a violation is identified. We can already do that. So, if the council, by way of creating departmental policy, limits neighborhood services' ability to write a citation, if they're comfortable that the violation exists, then they're hamstrung worse than they were before. They need that ability to write that citation. And Susan answered your question by saying, pay the citation and go to court. There's always the ability to, and it's right within the code, to void the citation if it was written in error. So, the reason why we need that ability to write the citation is because, I, I will tell you, there are some landlords that we have identified as having overoccupied properties that we've dealt with in the past, and they know what they're doing. So, if we don't have the ability to write that citation, then we're powerless. I say we, neighborhood services, powerless. Perhaps in the directive, it says, under the very first piece, if an over occupancy violation is identified, a citation for a municipal infraction is issued, it probably should say maybe. Because then Susan or her enforcement staff has the ability to say, we've been here before, we've talked about this, you know the law, I'm going to write the citation. Or having that latitude, they could say, we're going to write our over occupancy investigation letter, let's look at this and see where we are. So, my point is, if you take away the ability to write the citation, then, then you leave neighborhood services powerless.
I think this is an important topic, the, when a citation can be issued. I just want to, I think for, you know, just for context, we should just remember the decisions that have been made from, you know, the three times, this is now the third time we've discussed this. The council reached unanimous consensus at our last discussion to advance this, the legislation to the legislative agenda with this topic, the, the occupancy letter being sent by certified mail and who that would be sent to, and then the, the effect of the ten-day time period and what would happen at the end of that. And, and the thing that I think was most important about that piece, and I don't know what remained to be discussed about that, but the thing that I remember that was most important about that is, at the end of the ten days, if no action had been taken whatsoever by the to evict or to remove the tenants, and it was obviously on the landlord to, it was, it was the landlord's fault at that point, even if it wasn't initially, even if they hadn't knowingly caused the over occupancy, at that point, it would be. And so, I, I think the policy side of this, which again, you know, I agree, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's something that needs to be before council, but if we're not going to put it in the law, it help, it certainly helps us in this conversation to be able to know whether or not, you know, the, the policy is going to achieve the desired effect. I, I think we've got a, you know, we've got a situation where the, the policy as written puts the onus on the responsible party at the end of those ten days. The question of who caused it first is really going to be challenging to determine through any investigation. I don't, I don't think we're going to be able to figure that out. But giving that ten-day window helps us figure out. The, the concern that Ms. Mitchell has, if I'm understanding correctly, is one that I have as well, that although that's a useful tool, you know, if you slap on the wrist at the start of the ten-day period before you figured out whose fault it was, then, you know, are, are you inadvertently punishing the wrong person?
I would, I would say...
To the people that we represent, I'm not sure they're worried about it, honestly, because no judge, a judge is going to say, whoever has to go, you got to give them sixty days.
Right.
So, you're living, you know, you're living on Russell Avenue, and sixty days is the end of the semester at, at that particular point. So, whatever you write has to take the people who own the house, and the law is very clear in all of the other parts of the code in this area, that it is the owner of the house... that it is the owner of the house to task for having this happen. I'll go back to two thousand nine and this city is not going to get in the middle of the relationship between landlord and tenant because landlord and tenant have always managed to somehow make it the city's fault that nothing happened. We're, we're done with that. Given what judges are saying to us about how long you have to put somebody out, you know, this happens, you know, the third week in September, sixty days from that is the third week in November, the house is already on the line somewhere waiting to be rented for the spring semester. So, for the people who live there in the forty-four, in the eighty-eight houses that are on either side of these forty-four houses that were found to be like this, they're looking for some relief. So what we try to do is say, this has to be tough at the front or else there's really nothing, all the landlord says is, well, you could investigate all you want, I got sixty days to get about. They're gonna stay for sixty days, wrong or right. And then it gets re-rented and we go back into the wheel of the same mouse running on the, in the same cage around the same circle. So, it would be our hope, staff's hope and my hope, that we come out strong at the beginning because once you get past the beginning, once you let it go with no relief or no way of saying to the property owner, you can't let this happen again, then we're just doing the same thing every semester.
One question, then, you're saying sixty days is really sixty days for the person to sign the lease, correct? Not the people they own.
If they live there more than two weeks, they have-
No.
Take sixty days. For the over, the over occupied, the extra people, people who are over occupying.
So, the ten days doesn't really mean anything.
Well, the ten days concerns me about this. If I'm a landlord and I am allowing, if I'm knowingly over occupying my structure, I, the city is, if, if we allow ten days for them to abate the violation, in essence, that's what number two is doing. If, if that's what, if that's what, if the intention is, is doing, they can just keep doing it over and over again and they're not getting penalized if we're not fawning them, if we're not doing anything. So they can just keep doing it over and over and they're just, so if they get away with it two months, they're getting away with two months rent extra. And it's okay, we're just not doing anything about, you know, they're just getting caught by the city and saying, okay, you have to let them go.
So, so-
It's, it's not fair.
If, if on, if on the day the violation is, is identified and an investigation begins and a letter goes out, if there's a fine at that point to say, you know, we have enough, we have enough evidence that there is over occupancy at this property, that you're being hit with a fine.
Yeah.
Then, an investigation can, continues presumably for those ten days. And at the end of those ten days, you don't know at the beginning really whether or not the, the tenant's over occupied without the landlord's knowledge or if the landlord-
Regardless-
You don't necessarily know.
Regardless of who is doing it, it's gonna be the responsibility of the property owner.
Well, well, right, right, but what we don't wanna do is create a situation where you're, you know, you're punishing the property owner for something that they didn't do. Other than, I think, the fine, which I, I get that. However, at the end of those ten days, if they've done nothing to, to rectify the situation, I mean, that's what makes sense to me about the ten day piece. And that's why I could get on board with the fining at the start of the, at the start of the, at the outset of the investigation. But at the end of those ten days, um, you know, I think that's, that's the point at which it would make sense to me if there was additional, you know, the, the non-renewal of license, all of those punishments, the suspension, things like that.
Would it, let me ask this question. On a violation of shutters falling off the side of a house, if we changed this legislation to sort of indicate that we are willing to get into the business of deciding if it was the tenant or the landlord, doesn't that open us up on all the other violations that we write on properties that are? I mean, I, if, if I'm the landlord, I hear this, I go, well, hey, I'm gonna be able to get out of this because I'll just say, the people who live there knocked it over and then we are months. I, I just, it would seem to me that we've got to be consistent in all of this, even though we don't-
I agree.
I, I just, I understand that there are landlords out there that end up being victims of kids going, but that's for their industry to solve, not, not for us to solve. They've gotta come together, the people, people who own those houses that are lawfully being rented in those areas, those landlords have gotta go to the other landlords and, you know, at Salisbury, we could make a chart right now between the people in the room and know who's on which side of the chart.
So I, I agree when we're talking about writing a check. When we're talking about suspending a license or the ability to rent the unit, I think we wanna be sure.
Did you mean the ability to write the citation on the front end?
On the, on the, the ability to write the citation on the front end, once, once, you know, the housing official has the evidence they needed to make that determination, that makes perfect sense to me. At the end of those ten days, you know, then I think, a- at the end of those ten days, then I, you know, I think taking further action makes sense to me. You know, that way you could say, okay, you know, again, Johnny was sleeping on a couch, Johnny shouldn't have been.
But if they sign the lease, which should already say-
But, but when Johnny says, you know, when, when Mr. or Mrs. landlord says, okay, I didn't know they had Johnny sleeping on the couch, Johnny's out. And Johnny, and, and they can say, you know, to, you know, Suzie, Tommy, Stevie, you know, Johnny's gotta be out within, you know, forty-eight hours and if they're not, you know, I'm, if, you know, I'm gonna start eviction procedure on all of you uh, for violating, violating your lease, which they can do, um, as the people who signed the lease. Then I understand saying, you know, okay, we're not going to suspend your license. We're still, you're still paying the five hundred dollar fine because it's still happened on the property, on your property. Um, you know, you, you have to take some responsibility for that. Um, and that's gonna help you learn the lesson of communicating more to, uh, your tenants. Uh, but I think at the end of the day, you wouldn't want to, at the end of those ten days, if that were the situation, uh, and they took every action they could once they were notified, you wouldn't want to suspend a license. You wouldn't want to suspend the ability to rent on that, uh, at that property.
For the people who live next door, I, I-
I'm, I'm the people who live next door.
I know, I just, for the people who live next door, they-
It's my street.
In any of the cases, their remedy has to come as quickly as possible. So, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we, um, how we, if they s- sign the lease and they s- and, and they sign the thing down at the bottom that says, this is the number of people who are allowed to live here, then doesn't the landlord have the responsibility to hold them to that number? Whether or not they lie to that landlord or not.
Right, and they're gonna do everything they can.
So, my question is, is if I own the property next door and I, and I rent it to, to Tom and Susan and they sign that two, no more than two unrelated people are supposed to live there, isn't it my responsibility to go by and check? Isn't it my responsibility to s- to, to see how the money's coming in as the rent is paid? Isn't it my responsibility to, I, and we, we've been through this with-
To the extent that you can, sure.
How are you gonna know that?
Because you have to give a twenty-four hour notice for every day.
You just can't pop in on one person, how are you gonna know where the money is?
Twenty-four hour notice, they could clean up the house when it come by.
Mr. President.
I think it's their, I think it's their responsibility to go check every day.
Mr. Tillman.
When I was, I was asked to review this memo. And, um, my understanding is that the, the, the citation has always been issued at the time an occu- over occupancy is determined, so that, that, number one, reflects what is the current policy. My understanding was that the ten day grace period was being given, as you, I think, just said, in order to prevent, and, you know, an administrative, uh, you know, their license and registration from being affected. So that if they did fully comply within that ten days, they weren't risking a license or a registration of a rental property. Um, that that was the goal, to give them that grace period before we took that extraordinary measure of, of yanking of, of a licenser.
Right, that's what this policy says and, and that's what I think.
And, and the, the penalty of reducing the number of occupants would also not kick in until after that ten day grace period was given. But, but n- none of this would prevent the issuance of a citation upon a finding of over occupancy. I mean, so that's the way this was drafted, that was the purpose. If that's not what you want, then-
Right, are, are, so are we not happy with the policy?
If I can make two points here, is one, I think that instead of calling an investigation excessive occupancy, if we can call it identification-
Okay.
Because, one, staff is not gonna write a citation unless they're pretty sure there's over occupancy because staff is not gonna go into court with a case that is-
Yes.
inaccurate.
Right, so number one, it says identification of over occupancy.
Yes, so if we can change that language into identification instead of investigation and identifying is an investigation.
Number two says an investigation of ex- excess-
And then at the time of writing the citation, they have to have evidence and proof to be able to support writing a citation. That citation has to be supported by evidence in court. So for the person that has written a citation, for them to be able to take it to court, has to have sufficient, you know, reason to, and then the officers have to have evidence. So, they, we have to have a strong case. So they're not gonna be just raiding them haphazardly, we have to have a strong case.
Let me ask this question, when the landlord appeals, the first thing it's gonna go to is the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Do the, do the over occupied persons in the house get to stay there while it's on appeal then? Because now I'm up over the-
They get to stay-
Sixty to eighty day period and now I'm into a, yet another semester. All, all I'm saying to you is, is, is be tough now or be tough later, but you gotta be tough at some point.
Yeah, I, I liken it to, this is a business. It's no different than the business I was running in a chemical plant. And if, if I'm in violation of something, let's say that I discharge into the river, there's two, two choices, either it was an accident or I discharged it. In terms of the government, governmental agency, doesn't matter. It's a discharge into the river, you're issued a citation and then you have to prove whether it was on purpose or not.
So, I mean, so that's-
I mean, it is a business. When you get into this business, a- and I understand both sides of it and I'm the last guy that wants to punish, uh, someone's being taken advantage of by people sneaking in and out of the houses. I, I fully understand that. But going, when you, when you decide to, to go into this business, you know the obligations just as a businessman does and you know the risks that are associated with it. So from that aspect of it, I'm torn. But I will tell you that it's very clear that you have to at some point hold people accountable because if you don't hold people accountable, next year there's gonna be ninety-six of these things.
I have one more.
I'd like to, I'm sorry, Ms. Shields, and then I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. Shields to come on.
I have a question and what I'm hearing here, um, Susan, these forty-eight houses, where are they located?
They're all within the Camden neighborhood, um, centered around the Druid Hill, Russell, that area, College Avenue.
And I think, in all fairness, um, we need to be careful what we say when we're doing this, um, particular legislation because we're targeting one's population, which is college students. Now, how about the other neighborhoods that may have over occupancy? How many of those have you investigated or complained about? Because I keep hearing college students, semester, you know, you gotta be careful because it looks like you're going after college kids. And when you live around a camp, I went down Camden Avenue yesterday and I look at all the homes that I knew people lived in, they got offices, every house is an office or missions office, all pretty brick homes. Something, somebody's got an office, a missions or whatever. You're surrounded by college and you're surrounded by college, you're gonna have college kids. So when you're, when you're using the words semesters and, uh, 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 parties and things like that, to me, it's discriminatory against one set of people. And I'd be careful, you know, when we do this legislation, that we're not targeting the college kids because it's how all this stuff started anyway, forwarded to you, the college kids. I don't have that problem. They might have other problems, but we also need to, if you're gonna investigate that particular side of town, investigate the other sides of town. We may not have the wild parties, but we may have houses that may have over occupancy.
We do have the same issues in other parts of town, we just don't have as many, it's not as dense. I'm using this area for example because it's so dense.
And it's just, and I just be careful and let, just use all the neighborhoods because then, then it's like you're targeting one set of people and it shouldn't be that way.
Well, Ms. Phillips indicated that the majority of these cases are complaint driven. So that's, that's why they're being brought to our attention, these neighborhoods are policing themselves, so to speak.
You know, Shady, the other thing that, that I've asked Mr. Lennox to do is to look at the build out in the university section of the comprehensive plan. Because with all of the building that has gone on along Only Road, along Dyke's Road and, and South Division, yeah, we haven't yet, you've got another couple annexations getting ready to come to you, they're smaller. The question really comes is that, given the number of students at the university, at what point will there be in the university section of our comprehensive plan enough room for all of our students to, to live there, sort of on a, on a, on a, I don't wanna say a compound, but you know what I mean, there's, there is that section of town.
We don't wanna say a compound.
An island.
Community.
Community, there we go. Where I got that one. It has been suggested, and this is, this is, I don't wanna throw a, a wild thing into the mix here, but if at some point the industry provides enough houses in that university zoned district that it might be time to start talking with the university about phasing out student rentals in our, our, in our, our, I don't like talking about zoning, five, I was gonna say one, but that's probably where we have bulldozers and things like that, our five. We, I promise you that regardless of what happens here, that Mr. Lennox and I will continue to explore what that build out looks in all of those areas, what's still left inside the comprehensive plan where we drew the circle around and said we're not gonna go any further. I, I wanna say, whatever the road is that, that, that Only Road would meet, not Gumby, no, it's not Gumby, Gumby's on the other side of town, that's the, that's the Glen Avenue. No, it's not John, um, what's the one past Johnson's, Johnson's, McAllister's?
Robbins Avenue?
Robbins.
Ding ding ding.
Tom wins. So the question is, is if, if the university district is gonna go out that far and then we take a look at our water and sewer, I'm not trying to move people into certain areas, but if the industry is going to build so that, and, and they're going to be billed as University Park, it's obviously not at over fifty-five. You know what I mean, it's, it's, it is there, it works in conjunction with the college. You know, those, we're always gonna be torn between the group of students who live across the street who didn't do any of these things, that didn't have any of these things happen and that they were, I can't say they were education majors because I was and I, that would be wrong. Uh, you know, they were social work majors who had classes on Monday through Friday at eight AM and they wa- you know, those, the conditions existed where they didn't get in, into any trouble. This is a short term fix for something that's still happening and I believe happening in larger numbers than we'll ever know. But should be with what's being built in the university section of our code, happening in smaller numbers. So, I say that to you because when you say that, and I, I don't wanna, I, I don't, hey, you two down there, don't, you two down there, I'm getting ready to say this, somebody's making money. And the question is, are they making it illegally? And are the people that- And are the people that send us to office asking us to clamp down? So I'm willing to explore the larger section of where students may go in the future. But today, given the amount of money, and it is in the fifty to sixty millions of dollars a year range, the, the rental industry.
We, uh, Mr. Stevenson and I sat down and thought this out one afternoon, and this was a couple of years ago, and we're talking closer to ninety to a hundred million a year.
So unless we want to hire people who are, and we've been through this, we've been through with four to two, are we going to dig through people's trash? Are, are, are we gonna, to figure out who's getting mail there? I mean, I'm not, I don't think we want to do that. But this is a message sender, and we're either going to send a message that we, that this has to stop.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we're looking at the dying throes of student rental in the neighborhoods, but something's changing. And I think.
Well, the nature of students is changing too.
What's that?
The nature of what's happening is changing too. You know, in my day, which wasn't that long ago. Um, you know, the bookbag brigade didn't exist. We didn't have bookbags. We carried them by hand. Um, you know, the changing nature of the way kids communicate with one another, how fast something can balloon into, I just invited Jack and Tim over, and the next thing I know, I had a council in a room full of people. And the person, you know, the kid who's having the party's like, well, do I?
That was, that was quite obvious early one Friday night on my street. But, uh, you know, how quickly these things can grow into a massive, massive event. But yeah, I think something's changing. I mean, there are quite a few rentals that are vacant, uh, in neighborhoods, you know.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, a symptom of the new housing that's come online recently, and I'll bet that, that's going to continue to change as the gathering and the glades or the land or all of these places come online.
I think we, the other discussion I think I'm hoping to have with you during budget time is to what is, in the solving of these problems, i- i- other neighborhoods have it the same way, no, Shani has it, I have it, where it's been sitting there vacant. If students are in that university district, what happens to those houses that may not be in good shape anymore? What happens to a house on Druid Hill Avenue that has one and a half bathrooms, or maybe just one bathroom? In a world where we all expect to have two point five and one when you come in the door, you know, a little powder room when you come in, come in the door. What do we do as a city in terms of the larger issue of how, of the housing stock? So I think those, the, the thing about the, the university designation in the code, and the thing of what to do with houses that, are they past the point of being rentable, has to come. This is just, this is just a, this is the beginnings. This is where those two byproduct things sprout out of, so.
Well, before, before we get to a conclusion on this, I want to give Mr. DeShiel an opportunity to talk, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone. And then Mr. Williams, after that. Thank you for joining us.
I'm Chuck DeShiel, and I appreciate you listening to us, and I've listened to your conversations, and I live in Camden neighborhood, and the reason that the college students, uh, are considered a group or, it's because this is where so many of the violations come. I mean, it's just the nature, it's so lucrative. Five hundred dollars a person in a house is the average rent. And they're not going to get that in a family house. They're not going to get fifteen hundred dollars a month to, that they're renting to a middle class family. So this is why we're such a target in our neighborhood. I've lived in Pinehurst for sixty two years, as well as ninety percent of the residents have been there thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years. And I've heard the arguments year after year from students saying, you live near a college, and if you don't like it, get out. And that's not really how a community is built. Uh, that was even in an article in the Salisbury University, uh, newspaper, the first week after we had a huge, huge party with hundreds of kids on Druid Hill Avenue, the first Friday night. Hundreds of kids, every one of them intoxicated, language telling the police to blank off, you name it. Disrespect beyond disrespect. Not a neighborhood, that's not a neighborhood, it's not a community. So, but the whole point of, of this is, I have had many, I complain on behalf of many of my neighbors, as well as from myself, to protect a neighborhood that I grew up in, that I love. I grew up around Pinehurst School, which has now been debilitated, because there weren't enough stu-, kids living in the neighborhood, because the houses were near the college, and it was too lucrative to rent them. Families could not compete to buy these houses to live in them, because they could bring in fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty five hundred. Some of the houses are twenty five hundred dollars a month. That is not normal rent for a fifty thousand dollar house or a hundred thousand dollar house. So families couldn't compete. There weren't enough children in the neighborhood to support Pinehurst School. So they just, so kids are coming from everywhere there. It has really made a difference in the, in the, the school. Uh, my son went there, loved it. It was always a diverse school. It was a wonderful school, but it's not neighborhood kids. So they're going ten miles away. They're not, there's, that community is missing. And it's hurt the values of the houses. It has definitely hurt the values of the houses to have students. I don't think any one of you would want to live next door to what a lot of people live next to. But the whole point is, many, many, many times, um, these houses have been reported. They have so much time, as has been stated, they've got sixty days, they've got ninety days. They get through the semester. They say, we'll get rid of them in December. In January, they start all over again. They get through the whole year again. They've gotten fifteen thousand dollars worth of rent out of a house that should have gotten nowhere near that. These are houses that are purchased after four to two. These are purchased by people who know the law. They know they're breaking the law. It's in every settlement sheet. They have to sign it when they buy the house. So they know what they're doing. And if they're putting a house up for rent for fifteen hundred a month, they're aiming at more than two students, if you're talking about a student rental. So, but my whole point is, I think that the council here, rightly so, defends the town, uh, businessmen. But you know what? We're not helping the SPOA members who are complying. They're getting hurt by this, because the competition they're getting faced with by all these, these empty rentals, some of the empty rentals are because the college has added on rooms. A lot of them are because parents from out of town, from New Jersey, from Pennsylvania, they're buying a house, because someone's telling them, you can put three or four kids in it, nobody will know. And they're pulling rentals away from our townspeople, who are responsible landlords, in the SPOA, with a SPOA. I have, I used to have a, a neighborhood versus, uh, you know, landlord stance while we were trying to get four to two through. Now, that seems to have dissipated to almost nothing, because the SPOA members are, they do what they're supposed to do. They're not the problem. We need to stop people from out of town who buy a house, put their child in there with two other children, which is not allowed. It's made, we're making it financially incentivized for them to come in, convert a house from a family home, and into a rental. Most of these houses, or a lot of the houses that are reported as over occupied, were single family homes that have just recently converted to rental. And we have a town so full of rental. So these people are not only hurting our local economy, meaning hurting the, our own landlords in this town, who act responsibly, but, you know, they're hurting the neighborhoods. And when a neighborhood gets eight to ten rentals out of twenty houses, after a while, there's no will to report anything. The neighborhood just keeps going like this. And you, and the, and the parties are so much huger. And I'm sorry if we're targeting one group, but if there are other areas that are problems, then their neighbor should report them if it's bothering them. But I have to tell you, it's very bothersome to watch your neighborhood go down and down and down, when it's been a good neighborhood. When frankly, we love in our neighborhood, I love having the college kids there. I just don't want such a concentration. I want, I, once four to two went through, I said to myself, this is the law, I accept it, and we'll go forward. But in the last so many years, they're starting more, as Susan said, more and more and more outsiders are coming in, buying houses, not, not taking care of them. They live in New Jersey. They could not care less. And they complete ignorance all they want, but when they're charging fifteen hundred dollars a month, they know exactly how many people are in that house. So anytime they're collecting a certain amount of rent, they know. These are willful people. There's one house that I will tell you that has, these people bought the house in two thousand and six, and has been over occupied ever since. Because every semester, Susan gives them an order, they redo, they say it's not, they drag their feet. They've never been to a hearing that I'm aware of, if I recall, every time. And then they'll get through the second semester and say they've left. And these are how, this is a house that generally has five to six in it, and it's never families. Now there's a family. Susan seemed to really get on them this year. Somehow she got through to them, and there's a family living in that house. I don't care if there are a hundred people in a family. Family lives differently, and it's law. It's legal, and it's, it's okay. It's what the law says. As I said, we accept four to two. You know, once that law came through, we said, that's the law, we accept that. It's the houses that aren't compliant, and that's all we're asking. And when they say the landlords, it is a big, big business, they're making money. You have to be responsible for what you do. Nobody's trying to be against them. We're trying to help them. And I don't know if Susan can tell you how many SPOA members this would affect, but I bet it's very close to zero.
And, and I'll just, not to interrupt you, Mr. DeShiel, but at our last conversation about this, um, there were quite a few landlords in the room.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Weisner, uh,
Martin.
Uh, Martin, Bill Martin was in the room, John Cannon was in the room, uh, and indicated support for the policy as it was written.
Yeah.
For what the mayor's proposed.
Yeah, she needs the teeth in a shorter amount of time, because in our neighborhood anyway, it is a college issue largely. It's not always, but largely. And unfortunately, that's just because of the neighborhood and where we live. And we are willing to complain, because we're trying to hold on to the neighborhood as something the city is, is proud of, and somewhere that's relatively safe, uh, even though we have some issues sometimes. But we like to keep the city having some community that's not empty all summer long, not empty half of, you know, all of Christmas, that's not got police problems and robberies because of empty houses and so on. So there are a certain amount, and with some of the college houses sprinkled through the houses, it's a, it's an invigorating environment. But not when it's, Druid Hill, I think, has had four houses in the last year, converted from single family ownership to parent owned, parents who live out of town, who over occupy, and, you know, it's, uh, that's what we're asking for. I guarantee you, not one local landlord that's a good decent landlord's going to have an issue. It's the people out of town. You need to stop them competing with our landlords, who are operating fairly, honestly. They're not perfect. Nobody is. No business is. But I have faith in most of them, and I can go to them, and they have local representation, and they will listen to you. You don't get that from Bob Smith from New Jersey, who doesn't even answer a letter. So that's really, without the teeth and the shorter period of time, a semester, a semester, and it's like, there's no law. And they're, and they just advertise openly at rates that are definitely aimed at over occupying. That's, I appreciate you listening to me.
Mr. DeShiel, thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with virtually everything you said, except for that you've been in the neighborhood for sixty two years. There's no way that's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's not true. I just made that up, because I'm only thirty, but strike the rest.
I saw, I saw the look Mr. Stevenson gave you when you said that. There's, there's no way you're that old. All right, thank you. And then I want to ask Mr. Williams to come on.
Hi, everyone. Pretty much all of you know me. I'm Theo Williams. Um, I'll be brief. I come at this from the standpoint of both a college student, which is never really heard of in this chamber usually, heard from. Um, and, and that of a local resident. My mother's been a professor at the university for over twenty years. I've lived in the Camden neighborhood for over twenty years. I grew up on Mr. Spies' steps. Um, so I, I know, I know the area well. Um, and why I want to come here to speak as a college student is, what I haven't heard is what goes on when a college student goes to a landlord? Because I've, I've lived in several places, and this is my sixth year in college, so I, I know my, know my way around, sub leased, leased. Um, and I've had landlords and landlord companies who have pulled out, uh, you know, zoning maps. And, you know, I've gotten emails that have said, you know, you cannot over occupy in this place, and they've been very diligent. On the other hand, I've had several landlords who have explicitly said these words. Although it is illegal to have more than X number of people in this house, we will not check, and it is your responsibility to do so. I've, those, those are the words, the, from landlords or their staff have given to me. And so I, I feel like, because I, I remember four to two. I was protesting, my mom got me out there. Remember the Tillmans? I, you know, I was protesting with their kids. And it was always, well, it's always the college student's problem, just the, you know, this block of people. And well, it's, yes, it is their problem. Like, I, I have friends who have done this, who, you know, someone got kicked out of their dorm or something, so they moved in, and they lived on the couch for a month. You know, well, of course, I'm not going to be like, hey, there's zoning ordinance, say you can't do that, Billy. But, you know, nevertheless, I mean, it's, it's both ways, but without legislation that actually says, hey, you know, landlords, you can't do this, because the numbers that have been quoted by Mr. DeShiel are, are, if anything, deflated. I mean, some of these places, again, six seventy five per person. I mean, I'm surrounded by them. Luckily, they're all really nice, but you're talking about six seventy five times four people over the course of twelve months. You know, if you give them a fifty thousand dollar fine, they're still, they're still profiting. I mean, it's, so, yeah, college students do do this, but you gotta have something that, I mean, again, it's on a semestral basis. You know, you have your sixty day window, you drag it out, you have an appeal, you get ninety days, there goes the semester, new people do it all over again. It's been going on for over twenty years, and, I mean, ever since I've been alive. I haven't been alive for sixty two years, but, you know, it's something. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Theo. Appreciate it. Ms. Mitchell, did you have something?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How long can somebody be in someone's house and still be considered visiting? Is it a week, two weeks? What is it?
The code does not define. The only thing, how the code defines it, it says if, if someone has a space in the residence.
Okay, so.
Which could be a couch.
Could be a toothbrush.
Okay.
Well, I like, um, Jack's, Mr. Heath's example perfectly. You're going to get fined. You dumped in the river, you dumped in the river, whether it was an accidental, because you didn't do something that prevented that, or because, or it was intentional, because you didn't feel like hauling it or want to pay to haul it. What I'm concerned about is the situation where somebody jumped the fence and went in and opened the valve to make it dump into the river. There were situations where somebody got kicked out of a dorm and crashed on the couch. Um, or maybe they're visiting from out of town. I, I'm not sure. And in that ten days, I don't know what's involved in your determination, and if, how you tell that difference, whether it's somebody visiting or somebody that's now living there effectively.
I know that.
And, because it looks like it would look pretty much the same if all, all it takes is a toothbrush.
I know that the code enforcement officers would never write a citation if we're family visiting over the holidays. That sort of situation. I mean, there would have to be evidence of someone taking up residence.
Okay, so there's no timeframe. My other thought was about the, the ten days. But if, um, say a property owner is, is on vacation, you send the certified letter, they're on two weeks vacation. Do they even see that and have time to react? Should it be fifteen days? And then the only other comment that I had about it was, um, the particular part, the last part of section three, or number three, about the exemption, losing the exemption. The way this is written, that can happen with a first offense. So suppose we do get it wrong, and they lose their exemption. With the way this is set up, if they get to a third offense, that's twelve months with no one in the, not being able to rent the place, they're automatically going to lose that exemption. So I'm, I don't know that that needs to happen or be on the table after the first offense.
Well, but they don't, they wouldn't lose anything like that until after the ten day period, which would be as solid an investigation as we would ever offer, as we could ever do. They wouldn't lose it on day one, when the letter was issued. That's not how I read it, right? Say, anyone read that differently from what I'm reading?
No, but if they, um, let me just put together a scenario that was running through my mind as we were listening to all this. Okay, you, you find. as we were listening to all this. Okay, you, you find a, a place that someone's called and said, we think this is overoccupied. Person, there's five people in the house. You do an investigation, you determine that there are five people in the house every night, over whatever period of time, two days, three days, a week, whatever. Maybe one of them, two of them are visiting, maybe they're, maybe they're living there, I don't know. So you send that letter, or you issue that citation, then you do your identification of excessive occupancy during that ten days. You've sent the certified letter, you do all these things, but the property owner's on vacation. And so you don't get a response from them because they don't know until four days later when they get home from their two-week vacation. By that time, they've got the citation, okay, fine, they didn't take any action to move it out. But now, because they didn't do anything, now we're into three, which includes the exemption being lost permanently. It doesn't say may. It says additionally, if an exemption from three or four unrelated was granted, this nonconforming use will be lost permanently. So that could happen on the first offense, as I read it.
The exemption would only happen if they were granted permission to have three or four.
Right. But in, in, in a home that has an exemption for three or four, let's say they have an exemption to have four, and there's that fifth person there, that same scenario I just went through.
Yes.
First offense, they could lose that exemption.
Yes, but shouldn't there be a local property manager that the, that, yeah, I mean, there always has to be somebody...
Yeah, but if they're just on vacation for two weeks...
And if they're just on vacation, I mean, an appeal would toss that out, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's, there's...
If it was actually overoccupied, what's the basis for the appeal?
They, they would take their, the citation, they would take the court if neighborhood services decided to prosecute it. The property owner would file an appeal with the housing board, come to the board and say, I was in Florida for two weeks, here's my travel itinerary, here's a copy of my plane tickets. And the board's gonna overturn that. I mean, I've seen it happen over and over again, not in that particular case. But, I mean, they're reasonable. If, and that's to say that Susan's not going to, not gonna say, okay, I'll, I'll work with you on this.
But at that point, you don't, you don't know until it's all, it's all done. And I have heard back of cases that not even with house, just housing, but in other things, where we didn't explicitly put something in the legislation. And then when it came time to do what we talked about would happen or should happen, it didn't happen because it wasn't explicitly in the policy or the legislation.
You can't write every scenario in the code.
If I could, I, I, yeah, I think, I think it's impossible to cut, to write legislation that's gonna apply to every particular instance. I think in summation, from my mind, all the gentlemen that were here, and ladies that were here last time, who were in the real estate business, I would almost bet, in fact, I would bet, not a lot, but I would bet, that they're not gonna be, they're not gonna have issues with these because they have their act together. What we're after are those individuals that were described before that they know exactly what they're doing. And is it, is it a shame that some people may, but there's a procedure to rectify that situation? We can't write, no one can write is that good. I'm certainly not that good, where you can write legislation for every single instant. But I think that if we send a message that's loud and clear, to protect the, the, the good landlords that we have in, in the town, and send a clear message to those who are taking advantage of the system and advertising, we saw an advertisement a couple of weeks ago, where they advertised for five people. How can you do that? I mean, it's not, it's like somebody come up and slap in you. I think we need to slap back a little bit.
Well, I wasn't trying to legislate for every possibility, but I did see two little tweaks that could address those. And you could say, well, somebody might be on vacation for a month, yeah. But two weeks is a pretty normal vacation time. So a simple fifteen days rather than ten days would address that. And my feeling is that the exemption really it, should be after the third offense, which would be automatic anyway, because they're, they can't sprint it for twelve months. When it's vacant for twelve months, you lose all your exemptions.
The exemption is just put there, just placed there. The exemption could happen, just like you said, at the first. That's just...
I know, and I don't like that. That's my point. I don't think that it should after the first offense.
But it should, because if they've been granted the exemption, they should be, they should take care of that exemption. They should not be overoccupying at all. They should lose it if they, if they violate the occupancy code.
If they did it intentionally.
Absolutely.
But if it's a case where the occupants did it, the tenants did it without their knowledge, and...
That's where they should appeal at.
Yeah, but there's no guarantee that that's gonna be successful.
Mr. De...
True.
Just one more time here, the, the provisions in the, in this section, we, we've got the whole original code in here, as well as the, as the proposed changes. The code as originally written, if you appealed to the board and you lost, you would have your numbers reduced under the code as it exists now. And this isn't going to change that. But the purpose, the purpose of this legislation was to make, to get rid of the reference to two unrelated persons in, as the code now reads, and reword it to say, with no additional occupants permitted pursuant to the dwelling status as a nonconforming use, because in some cases, you might be allowed more than two.
I think you have made that point.
So, so in other words, you, you would be changing the existing law, you know, I guess to make it more favorable to the landlords than it now is, you know?
We'd be weakening the current statute.
And, and I, and I can say from my own experience that at the last meeting, you know, Mr. Cannon came up to me and said, we support this. So, I mean, he had, he had no problem with it.
I'm gonna, may I make one more comment?
Yes.
I'm gonna support this legislation. However, I believe that if the houses that were problem houses and the people inside of them were quiet as mice, we would not be here. I believe what's happened is the behavior of the young people of today is causing this. And what we're doing, as usual, is legislating behavior. And what's gonna happen, when this happens and they move out of Camden area, they're gonna go somewhere else. Either going to county, or they're going north, south, somewhere they're going to, to find a place to party. Because it's a party town. That's why we got the trolley, the party. So, you know, you know, you know, that's what it's for, to take the college students downtown to party. And then go back home.
At least around the neighborhood.
And then you go back home and, and mess up the neighborhood. But I'm just saying, this is, this again, as I've said over and over, years and years, you're trying to legislate behavior because our kids do not know. And I really believe some of the parents are trying to help their kids and don't know what their kids are doing because they, they're up in New York, New Jersey somewhere. But I think that if they didn't have these wild parties in the yard and doing everything they're thinking of, we wouldn't have, we sitting here right today. So I think our kids and the, and the, and the college people should be training their kids how to act when they're living next door to older people. And kids, they don't respect older people. And that's because discipline was taken out and kicked out of the window. So if my children were just sworn in, they would not be turned.
We were talking about that before the start of the meeting, I know you would.
Mr. De... If you could, after everybody's done, if you could, if, after everybody's done, for the edification of the public, if you and Ms. Phillips, if, if we have to stand up and act this out in front of the cameras, it is going, it's gonna really need to be clear to the public what it is that, that, that we're going to do. It, it, it's because if this doesn't accomplish, because I, I'll be clear, I, I'm not clear, I don't mean to sound like that. I'm gonna tell you, if I was on your side, I'd be trying to shut this thing down on the first one. Because if it's happening once, it's gonna be happening all the time. But I'm not over there. I have to go and enforce what you all pass. But it would really be helpful for the neighbors, for the, the property owners, and I will also just say this, the, the indication that it isn't some of our own people might possibly not be correct. I just, having, to get the phone calls from neighbors and to get the phone calls in my office from students, yes, out-of-town parents who own, but there's an awful lot of familiar names that I know that come in, in, into the office. So I would just want, after you decide what it is you want to do, and, and we make these changes, that maybe what Susan and I will try and do is put out something to the neighborhood associations that, that says, these are the steps that we can take. This is where you call right away. Because when somebody calls your house in the middle of the night and there's six hundred kids next door, then we'll hear about a ten-day waiting period. And I will agree with you and sign this legislation, even though I do not think it goes far enough. But I will tell you that the minute this happens again, and they found, to find a way around it, I'll be right back with you with more changes.
Two things. And then I know Mr. Spees had a comment to make. I, I agree. And, you know, I, I don't think it's a ten-day waiting period. I think, you know, the action begins on day one. But my, my feeling was also, I mean, and I may be guilty of having suggested this period of time for an investigation to occur, a sort of official period, that would allow, you know, a determination of whether or not the landlord was going to fix it, if they did it, if they didn't do it in the first place or weren't aware of. And it was seventy-two hours, we were talking about then. And it got to ten days. But rather than go to the direction of, of lengthening it to two weeks, I would think, you know, hey, you, you either are going to tell them to fix it if you had no prior knowledge, or you're not. And you could do that in a business day.
Can the, and we, we changed it from investigation to what?
Identification.
The identification process, if, if the housing official identifies it in forty-eight hours, can they write it then? Or do they have to wait?
When the housing official identifies it, that's the init, I mean, that's the determination, that's the initiation. It's not as if that's really an investigation period after that, ten days, two days, whatever it is. That's not an investigation period, as Susan has said. You know, the, the determination's been made. What that period is, is to say, you know, you, Mr. Landlord, were you aware of this? You know, now you've got a letter that says, and you've got a five hundred dollar citation, that says it's happening. So are you going to fix it? Not? Okay, then, you know, we now know who's responsible for this. That, that's all that period allows. And I think the shorter, the better. But another thing I, I should note, if, assuming we pass this legislation, that text exists in the policy. So if that's not working, you know, you can change the policy. You know, we, council wanted to see it, but it's, that's in policy. That's not in, that's in departmental policy, not in the law.
Yeah.
And I don't think it should be in the law, personally.
It will be important for us to watch very closely as one of these cases makes its way through. Because either the investigate, the, what do we call it again?
Identification.
The identification period, the appeal period, the court period.
What happens?
Yes. And, and it, it would be nice at some point during my tenure here to be able to say that we created some case law that actually allowed for the relief of the people who, who live there. Don't know, I see Susan shaking her head, I don't know whether or not we're doing this now. I think we're trying to tighten up and, and be a little faster with what our reaction time is. But this, and, you know, we'll get, we'll, we'll be back around to nonconformings here soon. You've got nonconforming coming up a little later on, on the, what term are we using for those adult businesses? You've got that, you've got that coming up as well. But one of the things that we share with our legislators at the state level is that the state says to us, protect single-family neighborhoods at all costs, and then has the laws written to protect the property owner in every single solitary case. So we try and explain to them on a statewide basis that you send us these mixed signals. It's like, come here while you're pushing me away, you know? So we'll continue to make that case with them, that, that what the judges are doing, what your laws say, what your comprehensive plans say for the state are not exactly what's happening down here in the, where the rubber meets the road. Sorry, Mr. Spees, you've been waiting.
I can wait. That's okay. First, I want to thank those who came forth and, and spoke this evening. This is a problem that has, you know, confounded us and tortured us for twenty years, easily. And sometimes we tend to forget about it when there's a lull in the action. But it does, it, it, it still hasn't changed over the years. The players are a little different, but that's about it. And that leads me into my first question. Ms. Phillips, there is a requirement that there be a local agent for out-of-town owners?
Yes.
And how far out of town do the people have to be to require that local agent?
Any, anyone out of Wycomica County.
Okay. And the local agents need to reside where?
Within Wycomica County.
Within Wycomica County. Do we have, you know, those who have, are on your list, those X number of houses, forty-eight houses, do they have agents? Do they all have agents? Can they be approached from that direction as well?
Without having the list in front of me, I can't recall which ones are, live locally and which ones do not. I know that there are quite a few that do not live locally. And they do, are properly licensed. And in order for them to be properly licensed, they would have to have local agents, yes.
Okay.
There were a few in the beginning, when we first identified them, that were not properly registered. And we, they had to go through that process. They are properly registered now.
Thank you. That leads me into my second question. And what level of confidence do you have that citations and other documents will actually reach the owners themselves? As opposed to being, as, as was said here earlier, the, I didn't get it, I was out of town, the agent didn't get it to me, the, the kid in the house didn't give it to the agent, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Are we, are we good with that? Because we need to have a direct line between your office and the owners. And are, are we good with that, do you think?
Very confident. There's always a slight margin of, of citations not reaching the destination. And I'll explain why. Citations are sent certified. We have some that are refused.
Okay.
Now, because the post office checks the box, as we all know, we've seen the green card at certain times, they'll have different attempts. We do get some back that where the recipient will refuse it. The post office will, some people have gotten smart. They know what, they know what our certified mail is.
Right.
And they will refuse them.
But then you post them on the property, as is required by code, and that satisfies notice.
Exactly. We're sending it to the owner of record and to the agent, if there is one, and posting property in this.
Yes, yes. And we take, we take a picture of the post.
Thank you, okay.
Below that, and that is, that is taken to court. So we have all that evidence that we have posted sufficiently according to code. So, yes.
Great. Lastly, it's just a little housekeeping. Check for hyphens in the, in the right up there.
Okay.
There's some missing.
Okay, we'll, we'll do one more. Check for...
With over occupancy. Okay. And the last thing I want to say is sort of editorial. Some of you are familiar with the, the village of Lynbrook, New York. It's where the fictional Everybody Loves Raymond took place, okay? This is a little, a little burg on Long Island. It's two square miles. There are about nineteen thousand people living in that two square miles. It's, it's pretty much just a residential area. They've taken it upon themselves to take the bull by the horns with over occupancy. First, first offense is a minimum of a thirty-five-hundred-dollar fine. Second offense is a minimum of five thousand dollar fine. So just to show where we are and where they are, and where we could go if, you know, we don't get compliance. As, as we said, you know, that, that, by the time, you know, three semester rolls around, we saw, we've already made, you know, six, seven thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand dollars on this property. So, you know, if it has to be a real spanking, then we should be prepared to do that in the future if, if, if this doesn't work out all that well.
Well, we, one thing we didn't discuss, and I'll, I'll just briefly say this, is that I have inspected homes that are severely overoccupied. And I've seen them where people have mattresses laid on the floor, even in the living room, where there's no space to one another. Now, that is not an issue with someone making a lot of money off the rental. I think I saw you process.
Appreciate it.
He knows what I'm talking about. That is a life, severe life safety issue. It is a life safety issue of the occupants and also our emergency service personnel that is going in. is going in. So that is the most severe, we know, we're concerned about our neighborhoods, preserving our neighborhoods, but we're also really concerned about preserving life. So that is probably their justification for, you know, those steep fines, which we also need to really be concerned with while we're talking about this legislation, because those situations do exist in the city.
I recall a case, I recall a case about six or seven years ago, where you actually inspected this place, and you found evidence, and this is like a 1,500-square-foot building, maybe 1,400, you found evidence of 60 people living in that home. Now, these, these guys were probably paying 50 bucks a week cash, so 60 times 50, okay, times 12, or times, you know, 50 weeks? That's, that's a load of money that was being made off of these people.
That's round-the-clock housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, shift.
Shift housing.
Living in shifts.
They're living in shifts and...
Working shifts and the rotating...
They work in shifts and they rotate.
Right.
Yeah, it's like, we called it hot-racking in the Navy when you worked, you know?
And, and I bet you, they're proactively going...
And that's really important, why we have to have strong legislation on the books like this, it's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions from council?
I would just suggest that you go to Telomon Corporation and place the deal with migrant toward labor. And educate them.
That's a good idea.
And let them know what's acceptable.
Is there consensus to move this item to, actually?
Yes.
We don't even need it. There was unanimous consensus at our last meeting on this, to move this to legislative session. But the policy document will not obviously come back to council, so...
I'm sorry, I, I real, I'm sorry.
Did you have a change?
One thing that I would like to add in the ordinance itself, and I think Mr. Tillman can help me find placement for it, I think it should be in 1526-110, somewhere towards the bottom part. I think that we should add a lifetime of ownership for the owner, that the suspension, denial, nonrenewal, that this would happen to the owner anytime, it wouldn't start over in a calendar year or every 24-month period. For the denial, nonrenewal, revocation, or suspension of license, so the first, second, or third time that... So the first offense, second offense, third offense?
Really, revocation is what we're talking about, right?
Right, only revocation.
Because suspensions are clearly defined period of time.
Exactly.
But revocation would be for the lifetime of ownership.
Yes, so basically only the suspension. So for the, for second or third, we would not, we would, it would not start over on a calendar year or 24-month period, it would be for the lifetime of the ownership of, say that it was, I was the rental owner, it'd be as long as I owned that specific property. It would not start over every year.
What would happen if, if the ownership falls under an LLC, and it's just simple to transfer ownership to another LLC under the same owners?
Tom, just the same as with the grass cutting, you know, how it starts over on a calendar, you know?
Are you talking about a suspension or a revocation?
Revocation, right?
Suspension, I'm sorry.
You're talking about suspension?
Yes.
Well, you would handle that internally.
Well, because the suspensions are for a set number of months.
Three months, six months, and 12 months.
Three, two, three, six, and 12 in the policy. And revocation, I assume, meant permanent.
And you can only, you can only revoke the license from that entity. And then what would happen is exactly what Mr. Spees just said, is that they'll create another LLC and get a new license.
So once we, if we suspend it, once an inspection is confirmed, you know, it's been...
But they would have to sell the property to the other LLC and tra, pay all the transfer fees and all that, correct?
I don't, I don't think so, I would defer to Mr. Tillman on that one, but I don't think so.
If what now, if the...
He's saying, Mr. Spees was asking if an LLC owned the property, and they got to the point where their license, rental license was revoked for that property, and they went and got a different LLC, could be the same makeup, could be slightly different, whatever, but they would have to, in order to come back for another license with a new LLC, wouldn't the property have to transfer to that new LLC?
It would.
Otherwise, the other one still owns it.
It would have, it would have to transfer, and that, the only thing is, I know that between affiliated legal entities, you can sometimes do it without paying the transfer tax. So they might be able to get away with not paying transfer tax, but they would have to transfer it to another entity.
Well, Mr. Tillman, could we, could we say it has to be an arms-length sale to remove the revocation?
That's one I'm going to have to research for you. That, that's, that's an issue that, that hasn't been raised until the, because this is all dealing with a part of the ordinance, again, that wasn't being amended.
Right.
Where we would be amending a part from what previously existed.
Well, I mean, and this is not to say that I'm not in support of what you're talking about, but, but in the meantime, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that a revocation should be interpreted as permanent.
Yes.
So unless you, as the housing official, interprets that differently...
No, I think I was, I think I was confusing the two, and I was thinking of if it would start over after a certain time period. I just didn't want the clock to, to restart for anyone, because I felt like if, once they owned the property, it should, the lifetime of their ownership of the property.
And again, I think it could be permanently on that property until the housing official says it's not.
That, I'm going to have, that's the issue I really need to research.
So it was set empty?
Because the, the law currently allows revocation of a license, it does allow that in the ordinance.
It was set empty and boarded up.
It wouldn't have to.
Why?
Because you could transfer it to an owner, it could be an owner occupied.
Not if he doesn't sell it.
Right. But it, I, my, my concern, my question here is, you know, the same as Mr. Spees, I think, if you simply transfer it to a newly-named organization, then you haven't changed a thing, really. So, I, again, I would interpret this at, as it's permanent until the housing official says otherwise, or...
Well, then that fixes what Mr. Spees said, correct?
Well, and I would say, I don't know the, I don't know what the courts would say. I don't know what the courts would say, but, but a determination of a revocation would only apply, I would think, to the current owner.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of layers here. If they get to the point of revocation, they're going to find a way around it if they want to, or they've learned their lesson with what it's cost them, and they're going to have to...
Well, again, that would be procedurally correct, so there wouldn't be anything with passing the ordinance, or taking the ordinance to the...
Not for tonight?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, good. I'm going to hold it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you both, thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Okay, next item on our agenda is the adult entertainment provisions. Mr. Tillman?
Could we take a couple of minutes?
You want five minutes?
Yes, please.
All right, we're going to take five minutes.